What's that?
Good.
Recording in progress.
Good.
Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. It is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person, and we are at the Old Town Hall. If you are joining by Zoom, the meeting I. D. is eight, three, two, oh, two, four, two, one, two, five, five, pass code, one, eight, eight, six, five, nine. You may also sign in by phone at one, nine, two, nine, two, zero, five, six, zero, nine, nine. This evening, unfortunately, we are having difficulties with Channel Nine. The meeting will be recorded and placed on YouTube. For public input, you may contact the Board of Selectmen's office prior to the meeting And you also may, using Zoom, as the information provided a moment ago. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters of those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Pacheco?
Present.
Mr. Karen?
Present.
Chairman Hall is present. This evening, we will be having a moment of silence. Three members of our community have passed. This time, I ask that you stand for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Please remain standing.
Please remain standing for the... Since our last meeting, three members of the Dyton community have passed. On Monday, former member of the Board of Selectmen, Dean Cronin, seventy-four, passed away. Husband of Patricia Cronin, he was also the father of Chief Sean Cronin. Services will be held from the Crepo Hathaway Funeral Home this Friday, awake from four to six forty-five P. M. And at six forty-five, there will be a memorial service held at the funeral home. Also passing, Madeline Cudero, eighty-nine of Dyton, wife of the late Ray Cudero. She passed away on Tuesday, December sixth, at the Catholic Memorial Home, following a long illness. And also, on November twenty-seventh, Malcolm W. Burnham of Dyton, he was eighty years of age. I ask that we remember them and their condolences to their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
This evening, the first item on the agenda is to recognize retiring Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Ponce. Chief McGee, could you come to the podium, please? Before we make our presentation, Deputy Chief, I'd like to thank you for your service. One of the things that I came to really appreciate when I was involved with the negotiations with the Fire Department, the brotherhood and sisterhood of all the members of the Dyton Fire Department. And that didn't just extend to the regular members. Their respect for yourself, Chief McGee, was very evident in our discussions and how they spoke about both of you. And the ability they felt to work with you on issues. I'm going to turn it over to Chief McGee. I'm sure he's worked with you many years, and he has many fine accolades to pass on.
Yes, so Deputy Ponce has been with the Dyton Fire Department thirty-five years come January first. My twenty-two years with the Fire Department, obviously, I've served with Steve shoulder to shoulder on many fires and many things. I've learned a ton from him. The loss of thirty-five years of experience from the deputy is going to be a big one to fill. Not only the thirty-five years of experience, but Steve's endless volunteerism to this community and this department is a void that will be felt. He's always at the station doing things, making sure things are done, worked hard to get Dyton their first ladder truck, worked hard to get the, all the site work for the expansion of Station Two donated to the town. So this is a big gap to fill, and hopefully, we can fill it, move on.
Thank you. Deputy Chief, could you come to the podium? Thank you. Mr. Ponce, before we present you with a certificate of recognition, I would like to extend the opportunity to both my colleagues if they have words of appreciation or tribute to you. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, obviously, I want to thank you for your many years of service to the town of Dyton. You've worked in a very difficult field, and I'm sure you've seen some, unfortunately, some tragedies in your career. So I appreciate everything you've done. Hopefully, we'll still see you around in town, but I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, I mean, Chief, I'm sorry, Lieutenant. You've been around as long as I've been alive. Not true, but thank you for thirty-five years. That's fantastic. You don't often hear that anymore. Thank you very much.
At this time, I would like to read the certificate of recognition. Whereas Deputy Chief Ponce began his tenure with the town of Dyton on January first, nineteen eighty-eight, as a call firefighter, and was appointed as Lieutenant on April first, nineteen ninety-nine, appointed to Captain on May eighteenth, twenty sixteen, and was most recently promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief on January first, two thousand eighteen. And whereas Deputy Chief Ponce has responded to calls for assistance in hurricanes, blizzards, structure fires, brush fires, motor vehicle crashes, and many other emergencies here in our town, as well as surrounding communities, when called upon for mutual aid. And whereas Deputy Chief Ponce was a very active member of the Dyton Fire Department, who volunteered thousands of hours to the department and the community. And whereas Deputy Chief Ponce was integral in getting the site work for the addition to Station Two donated to the town, as well as obtaining Dyton's first ladder truck. And whereas Deputy Chief Ponce has served the town with great excellence as a firefighter and as a leader within the Dyton Fire Department, continually demonstrating exemplary service to the town of Dyton and its residents with great pride and distinction. And now, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Dyton, to hereby recognize and thank Deputy Chief Ponce for his outstanding service to the Dyton Fire Department, and commend him for many years of dedication and commitment. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the great seal of the town of Dyton to be affixed on this fourteenth day of December, twenty twenty-two. The Board of Selectmen of the town of Dyton, Leonard E. Hall, Junior Chairman, Peter D. Karen, Clerk, Kenneth J. Pacheco, Member. Thank you and congratulations.
Okay, so I guess I have an opportunity to speak. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody, and I'd like to recognize my wife, because she did thirty-five years of service, too. My daughter and my son, also. A lot of times, sitting down at the supper table, we'd get interrupted, and get up and call. We'd have to go on a call, late nights, whatever. They sacrificed a lot, just as much as I did. I'd like to thank them and their support for thirty-five years. It's been a good ride. It was a lot of fun, if you look at it from firefighter's side of it, but you see good, you see bad, helping out the town. It was, I don't know what to say. I know Tuesdays and Sundays, I've been heading to the fire station every, for the last thirty-five years. I don't know what I'm going to do now. I'll have to find another Bobby or something like that.
Doors always open.
I'd like to thank the Chief for giving me the opportunity of being Deputy. It's been, it's been a great experience. It's been a great pleasure. I'm glad I could help the town of Dyton and the townspeople. Got to see a lot of changes, a lot of things, like the Chief and I had discussed, from old-fashioned turnout rubber raincoats to, you know, plastic helmets and rubber gloves and to full clothing now. And the Chief's done a great job and with the department, and I wish him the best of luck and I wish the townspeople the best of luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
We're going to take a picture with him, but I also want to picture also with your family after we take a picture with the Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still running for January.
Thank you. Good luck.
We do have several items on the agenda this evening in regards to the Fire Department. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the order of business to take Item Twelve A and B out of order.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. First on the agenda, letter from Chief Christopher McGee regarding department, by department promotions. Full-time Lieutenant Eric Gagnon to Captain, and full-time firefighter John Goethe to Lieutenant. Chief McGee, could you come to the podium and speak on these appointments?
So Eric's here with us. Eric was promoted from the rank of Lieutenant to Captain after the interview process and scoring and stuff. Eric has served the Dyton Fire Department for ten years. I'm sorry if I'm a little bit off, but ten years. Eric actually came to us before that from the city of Fall River with twelve years' experience firefighting in the city of Fall River. So he's going to take over fire prevention efforts for the town of Dyton, and I think he'll do a wonderful job. He's already started with the building commissioner today and yesterday, so I think he'll do just fine. John Goethe was a firefighter who started with us. John had to go on an ambulance call, unfortunately. He joined, I believe, around two thousand, Tom, sixteen? Sixteen, I believe. He serves as the department's EMS director, so he's in charge of all the ambulance stuff, the licensing, the controlled substance licensing, remediating things if something goes wrong with a call. So John has a lot of supervisory experience also with Swansea Ambulance Corps, so he'll find both his roles. I have complete confidence in both personnel and what their duties and responsibilities are going to be.
Thank you. I know I've had the opportunity to work with Eric in two roles. One was probably the most difficult day of my life. The second day was on the union negotiations, and he's a true professional and a very classy man. I look forward to being involved with both of these individuals, the fine job that they have done and will continue to do for Dyton. Thank you. Now, is there a swearing-in process? Is that done at?
Yeah, that's all completed, I believe.
That's done, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is a letter from Chief McGee regarding the appointment of full, the new full-time firefighter paramedic, Kevin Campanella. Kevin here this evening?
I realized that that was way down on the agenda. I didn't see it, so. Kevin comes to, Kevin starts on December twenty-ninth is his official start date. Kevin is coming from Brewster Ambulance with, I think he's got twelve years' experience on the ambulance, five or six years' experience as a paramedic, so we have complete confidence after the interview process with the deputy, the union president, Matt Silva, and town administrator, Mike Mullin. We felt that he was the best candidate, and he'll be enrolled in the next Career Recruit Academy coming up, hopefully, in Fall River.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to go to Item Ten D, review, discuss, and act Fire Station Building Committee appointments. Mr. Mullin? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Mr. Mullin, could you speak on these?
Yes, yes, as the board knows, over the last few weeks, we have been working to fill the spots on the newly established Fire Station Building Committee. We already have appointed, the board has appointed two of the representatives from the Fire Department. And tonight on the agenda, we're asking the board to designate, the Board of Selectmen to designate the board representative to the committee. And then, as you may remember from, again, the composition of the committee as well, it was also established with a member of the town's financial team, and we're recommending the appointment of Treasurer Paul Reynolds as well.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I will entertain a motion for an appointment of a member of the Board of Selectmen to be a representative on the Fire Station Building Committee.
I nominate Leonard Hall, Junior.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to appoint Dyton Town Treasurer Paul Reynolds to the Fire Station Building Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Mr. Reynolds, congratulations. Thank you. We still have, how many positions vacant? Two?
Yes, but don't quote me yes, but there are still...
We are looking for two members that we will be voting on at the December twenty-eighth meeting. Anyone who is interested in being on the Dyton Fire Station Building Committee should submit a letter asking for appointment to Town Administrative Assistant Karen Brady. Do we have a closing date for that?
It's ongoing, correct?
Yes, it's ongoing.
You will need it on what date, so for posting purposes?
Like ideally, we would like to have all these spots filled by the beginning of the year.
But I mean, as far as the meeting is the twenty-eighth?
Yes, so no later, I'm sorry, ideally, no later than Monday, December, no, I take that back because of the holiday. Ideally, no later than next Wednesday.
Okay, which would be the twenty-first. Yes.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns? Next on the agenda, Chief McGee, to review and discuss the proposed ambulance billing policy. Now, this will be the first reading. This will be a presentation, an informational session. I am not opening it up to the public at this time. If people have comments in regards to the ambulance billing policy, they may issue comments during public input. Since the second reading will be on December twenty-eighth, I want the public to have the opportunity to listen to the information that's being presented and to think about questions that they may have. And then I will open it up more to public input during the second session. We do have letters of support from Town Administrator Mullin, the Town Accountant, who is present here this evening, and the Treasurer Collector are also present. And I will, once Chief McGee has finished, allow them, if they so wish, to comment. Thank you. Chief McGee?
Mike, I don't have the, I don't have it with me. Haven't received this, so. All right, so is ambulance billing policy is not really the appropriate title, correct?
The ambulance billing...
Is this the time to discuss this?
Like, it would be the ambulance billing policy that includes abatements. I mean, we could make it an ambulance abatement policy as well. Like different, different towns have different names, but they all, I take them to mean the same thing.
Okay. All right. So you want me to read the whole policy? Is that what you're...
No, I don't think we need to read it word for word, Chief, just really provide an overview about a kind of why we're proposing this, how we got here.
Sure. So the intent behind this policy is really the abatements of ambulance bills that go unpaid. So when I took over as chief, there was approximately, don't take my exact word, but there was approximately twelve years of uncollected debt that was on the books. And from my understanding, the auditing company that we used at the time wanted the funds abated. So when I took over, there was, again, don't take, there was over a million dollars in uncollected debt that was there. And that was, again, twelve years of uncollected debt. So what we're trying to do is prevent that number to get to that point and have a real organized procedure on how we're going to abate these uncollected funds. So we got together, myself, the Town Accountant, Town Treasurer, basically the financial team, and discussed what that might look like, and we came up with the draft that we're presenting today. The uncollected funds aren't necessarily, it's not uncollected because we haven't tried. So the fund, the ambulance billing clerk who works for me at the Fire Department makes four attempts at collecting, and then the fifth one is a, just a statement saying that the funds are due to the town. So there is a procedure in hardship that we have that we send out and is available to people if they want to try to go for a hardship. Every means that we take is basically through, trying to collect through insurances, Medicare, Medicaid, all those processes that we have the ability to go after.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Not a question, but I do remember the situation probably five years ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, when it was brought to the attention of the Board of Selectmen. Speaking of the late Dean Cronin, he was on the board at that time, and it was a big, it was a mess. And I believe at that time, when a fee was going to be waived, had to go before the Board of Selectmen, but it wasn't, that wasn't happening. I'm not saying that that's a good idea at all, but that's the way it was before, and it just got, it was just so much money that was owed. I am, quite honestly, I am sympathetic to those families that can't afford to pay for the ambulance. Obviously, they'll need the ambulance, it's an emergency, but there was those situations. And I believe you have to look at the poverty level, you have to look at their financial situation, so I'm sure you're being reasonable in when those fees are being waived, but we don't want to go back to the way it was before. I remember it was just horrendous. They had meetings and meetings about it.
Correct.
Because there was so much money owed.
Correct. And we're trying to, we're trying to make a process where it conforms with the HIPAA policies, the federal government HIPAA guidelines, so that way, we're not putting patient information out there. So it's just trying to be responsible and not have the town in their financial statement show that we have all this uncollected funds out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
How much is now on the books?
Right now, it's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, and that's over four years of Rebecca doing the billing in-house.
So you make what I think. Thank you.
Serena, sorry to put you on the spot. Could you come up, please? Because I do have a few questions. Ms. Amron comes with the experience of having now worked in at least two communities.
Yes.
So she's seen, I'm sure this is not her first time seeing an ambulance policy or collection policy. Could you explain the good and what you see areas that we need from an accounting processing point of view?
Sure. So when I was closing the books for fiscal year twenty-two, it was apparent that there was... So, when I was closing the books for fiscal year '22, it was apparent that there wasn't any movement in the accounts receivables for the ambulance billings. So that made it apparent that, you know, the fire station, Rebecca is doing, because I did meet with her to, to go over with this, to make sure that they were doing what needed to be done. So within their software program, they are. So now, we're just trying to come up with a policy where we can mirror that with our, our accounting books. Because our, you know, our books currently are not accurate when it comes to ambulance receivables. So the number that, you know, they show being outstanding is not what, exactly what we have on the books. So we are trying to clean that up and to come with a smoother process for, you know, commitments, bills that are due, and then at, you know, when it gets to a certain point, then it's just deemed, you know, uncollectible.
Would a software upgrade help?
No, I don't think it's a software upgrade thing. I think it's just a procedural that needs to be established.
No, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Pacheco? Karen?
No, most likely.
Mr. Reynolds, do you have, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you would like to add? Thank you for being a part of this. I know being your first year on the job, your tires can seem overwhelming, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I frankly don't have overly much to add. I do believe that the policy that the chief has presented in collaboration with the financial team does represent a very strong step forward. It'll allow the town to enhance its ambulance billing practices, it'll streamline the collection process, it will contribute to an overall cleaner balance sheet, which I think is very good. It will enhance financial transparency, and it'll allow for stronger fiscal management, and it will let the residents of the town have a cleaner and clearer picture of its overall financial position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the things that I'd like to clarify, you'll hear the word "financial team" mentioned. Not to be confused with Finance Committee, or FinCon, as we call it in town parlance. When Mr. Mullin came on board, he put together a financial team, very talented group. I hope I won't forget anyone. We have the Treasurer Collector, Paul Reynolds, we have the Town Accountant, Serena Amorong, and we have the Chief Assessor, Stephanie Schechter.
And Karen Brady as well.
And the Administrative Assistant, Karen Brady, is also on their team. They meet, they go over best practices, they make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. They're a very valuable part. They bring expertise and training that most of us on the Board of Selectmen don't have. So, we take what they have to say very seriously. With that being said, does anyone have any questions in regards to this policy upgrade that we are looking to probably a first of the year pass? Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
You have a good night. Next on the agenda, Mr. Kevin Smith, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for your patience allowing us to put the Fire Department...
No problem.
Ahead of you. I also just want to give you a little bit of understanding how this all came about. At the Department Head meeting, Jonathan Gale spoke and explained what the community preservation does. So I asked him if he wanted to do the same presentation at our meeting. And he said that out of respect, he would allow, well, not allow, but he would ask that you do the presentation.
Out of respect, I think he just wanted to be home in his pajamas.
He's not alone.
We have application process, who qualifies, how the money is distributed.
Yeah, so we have, I think we have a lot going on in town with, that could possibly become a community preservation committee project and funded by the CPC. So this is good timing. And I'll just preface it by saying that we actually did, in our last meeting, we did set a date of January 19th, 2023, at 6:00 PM for our annual public hearing, which is a requirement of the CPA. But that's our time where we'll be doing our own outreach to help educate the community and other committees about what is and isn't eligible and what our application process looks like now. So everyone will have the opportunity outside of this meeting to attend that public hearing as well, to gain more information if they do know of projects that they have that could be CPC eligible. So you'll see that Administrator Mullin has pulled up for us the new, so after annual town meeting...
Do you want to use the mouse?
Yeah, that'd probably be easier. So we spent, as a committee, we spent a fair amount of time after annual town meeting reviewing what was our current application, streamlining it, streamlining it with launching of the new website, so that we'd have a product that could go up and be a little bit easier for residents and committee members to navigate. So what we did here is, so we started it off, and what we did, we, we researched other towns that have adopted CPA and took their information. We didn't want to re, you know, reinvent the wheel, so we pick and choose some other towns that we thought had good applications, and then implemented some of our own language. So we, we gave a clear instruction and review process for the application. I'm gonna jump down, because step one is determine project eligibility. And there is a link here, which I'm not gonna pull up, but we did insert a link from the community preservation organi, communitypreservation.org that gives you project eligibility. But then, there's an appendix at our bottom. You'll notice too, that our application process is much longer than it used to be. So right here, what you'll see is, this is directly from the Community Preservation Coalition's website, and it tells you project eligibility terms for the four categories which we can fund, which is open space, which also encompasses recreation, historic resources, recreational land, which could also be conservation land, or agriculture, and community housing. So it has, it's pretty much just a small chart, which tells you what you can and can't do within the CPA. So for instance, we'll use, because we, we know that it's an ongoing project that could possibly become before the CPC, the library, where it's a historic resource, and we know that we can use CPC funding to rehabilitate that building, because it is a historic resource, or also preserve it. And what you'll see here, one, one big thing, that in, in no way, the, the only thing that is ever eligible for support with CPC money is affordable housing. What we could do is, if we had a tremendous surplus and we didn't have a bunch of projects in the pipeline, we could actually write a warrant article where if we wanted to use that to subsidize low-income housing payments. So it's kind of something that probably a lot of people don't think about, because typically the CPC is funding projects all the time. But if we ever did get into the position where we did have a big surplus of funds, just kind, almost like how we do the senior tax credit, you could take low-income individuals and use this as a subsidy to support housing payments as well, which is also kind of interesting, and I don't think that many people think of. Scroll back up to the top. So step one of the project, or, or the process, is determining whether or not that project is eligible for CPC funding. So we just have this kind of little one-page eligibility, eligibility determination form. So anybody presenting a project would fill this out, and what we do is, we ask that this be sent over either at the, at our mailbox, at Town Hall, or via email. We have our email attached at the top, it's myself as the chairperson, or our clerk, Elizabeth Marrera. They could submit the application that way, we'll distribute it within the committee, and then we'll put it on the agenda. So we ask for this two weeks prior to our, our next meeting, which is almost always held on the third Thursday of the month, where we'd ask the applicant to come before us, we would determine within that meeting, or take, either if it is eligible, and we can move on to the application for funding, or if we, we would take it under consideration, depending on, on the size of the project. We also, as you, as we scroll down here, so what we tried to do too, to just make it a little bit easier and a little bit more transparent, is we gave, on step two, when you, after we've determined that the project is eligible, we gave up an itemized list of what we're looking for for project funding. We won't, we don't need to read through it all right now. So that's exactly what we're looking for there. We also put in links for the current Town of Dyton master plan and the open space and recreation plan, which is a good reference point, because what we're looking for also is that these projects that are presented before us do fit into those two, two plans. And then, we also outlined each, just to give a little bit more backbone to each category beyond that, one graph in the appendix is specific criteria for historical, and then we also, we linked our Historical Commission, Community Preservation Act Historic Project Guidelines, and the Secretary of Interior Standards for CPA. For recreation, we have a link to our Towns Parks and Rec Department. Open space, we linked our open space committee as well. And then, for affordable housing, we have that, their information there, and also a link to the Dyton Housing Authority. So then, step three would be submit your application, which in this part means the application for funding, where we consider whether or not we can, or want to fund the project put before us. Step four, Committee Preservation Committee, well, this coincides with, step three, Community Preservation Committee Review and Public Comment. So we want to encourage that when any party submits an application, that you do bring support with you, to speak on your project. We always feel like that is helpful. Step five is our town meeting recommendation and vote. So if we choose, if the project is eligible and we do vote to fund that project, the next step is a town meeting recommendation and vote. So the CPC itself will actually write that warrant article, like which many of us have seen in the past, and we'll bring that up at town meeting. One thing that we've also established in doing this new application process is that everyone currently on the board is of the attitude that we want to keep this as a year-round funding source. So we don't want to make it exclusive, that it's only presented at annual town meeting. We want to remain flexible, so that if there is a project that is of value and has time constraints, we wouldn't want to make somebody wait until June if we can fund it in November, if we have a special town meeting, if it happens. Some projects do, you know, that could make or break the feasibility of a project waiting that extra amount of time. We'll also accompany, once it's voted on at town meeting, if it does pass, you'll receive a award letter from the CPC saying that the project was funded, and then you'll obviously, that committee or, or group will work with the CPC itself and the Accounting Department to be able to utilize those funds, which is also kind of rolls into step seven. So that's all gonna come through the Accounting Department, but we'll be, it's, it's a little bit of an odd situation, whereas if an outside group, so typically, I'll give Parks and Rec, the North Dyton Playground project as an example, where that was to be expended by the Dyton Parks and Rec Department, we submit those invoices and just pay them directly. We have an account designated with that CPC funds. But a project like the historical markers, where it comes from the Historical Commission, those bills get submitted to the CPC, and the CPC submits the invoices. It was a little bit of different ways that the actual dispersment of funds happens with the CPC, but all kind of just little nuances that are easy to navigate. So all of this, and I want to thank our, our CPC clerk, Elizabeth Marrera, for getting all of this information up on our website. So she did a lot of this for us. I'll just keep scrolling down so you can see all of it, there's a couple more pages. This is just the cover sheet for when you get to the application for funding. But we tried to make it so that almost any and all information that you would need to put forth in application is available by the website. Anybody can also reach out to any one of our members if they have questions. And also, you know, the links to the CPA, the Community Preservation, the state's organization is also a great resource for this. So we made sure to kind of plug those links in along the way, so everybody can kind of answer their own questions, and then we can fill in the blanks for them if needed.
Thank you. Before I ask my questions, just, do you have any further...
Well, I, I've been just kind of scrolling down, so we see the whole thing. I don't give Mike his mouse back.
I could talk about this all night. There's a lot of information.
Well, I, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
I do, I do. I'm the chairman of the Library Building Committee, and we're going to be going before CPC on January 19th, so if you want to put us on the agenda. But we're not actually going to have the application at that time. We're going to explain our project, get some input from CPC, and then in February, is that gonna be okay? In February, we'll actually have our application and present it to the CPC again, and to see whether or not we're gonna get a recommendation, so that we can bring it to the annual town meeting in June. As you know, the Smith Hall is an historic building, we're trying to preserve it. It's gonna be our new library, which is great news for the Town of Dyton. Given that other towns, neighboring towns, spending $11 million to add on to their library, we're gonna do what we're doing, a lot less than that. So it's a great opportunity. So we're, I'm glad that we're gonna have that opportunity to go before the CPC and present our case to you, so.
I think that, that's a great approach for anybody presenting to us, is to even, to come and ask, you know, questions before you even submit your application, because I think it streamlines the process for everybody. We do have a note in here right at the very beginning. So for approval at the next town meeting, completed applications should be submitted no less than four months prior to the scheduled annual or special town meetings, so that we, we don't have to scramble to meet that, the deadline for our warrant articles. It gives us, it, it, four months is, is still tight, I mean, it has to kind of move along perfectly and not have any hiccups. But that was, we've kind of put that as the, you know, the dead, the absolute deadline would be four months prior, to have a reasonable consideration to be put on the next town meeting warrant.
So this would actually be a little less than four months, I would think, if we're submitting in February.
So you'll be...
The first week of Jones' usual annual town meeting, this is gonna be the third week in February.
That would be dependent on Administrator Mullin, can probably answer that better. Well, I would say roughly, when would warrant articles close, I guess, would be?
Usually in the, at the beginning of April, the warrant closes. And, and I mean, but I'm, like, I mean, I think the plan of the Library Building Committee, along with the, having a discussion at the January meeting, getting an application, especially with regards to the eligibility application, are we gonna go in? So if we can, so if we get everything in the queue, we, we discuss eligibility, you know, and also, so and also leading up to the January meeting, the project would be brought to the Historic Commission as well.
Okay.
To get the, you know, to get the, the local Historic Commission approval, like, as a historic, like, meeting the historic CPC criteria as well.
So I think for this particular project, just to give a little bit more info on it, I don't think it's unreasonable to say that you wouldn't be able to come to us with an eligibility application for January, because that is, we're looking for a brief description of the project, so we know it's historical, we know that you're renovating, so we're looking for that information, and then come, that would, you know, as long as it's voted by the members, to accept it and take it under consideration. Then we would move forward to, almost immediately, to your application for funding, which is where we're really looking for, you know... almost immediately to your application for funding, which is where we're really looking for, you know, everything that pertains to the project, you know, you know, costs and scope of works and things like that. I can't speak on behalf of the committee, but I, I also think that everyone on the committee is reasonable. We've seen it in the past. I experienced it with my, with my North Dayton Playground Project, that if we need to, you know, meet at a different time and not wait till the third Thursday of a month to be able to move a project along, I would hope that, you know, we would do that. You know, we, I don't think we can do it for every project and I don't think we want to set that precedent. But, um, again, it's been of our attitude to be flexible, again, even with the, just the year round funding process instead of strictly for annual. So it's all things that can be discussed within our committee if, if need be.
I just said, uh, it's gonna go before the historic commission on January tenth. So we'll have that information. You know, hopefully they're supporting the project. So we'll have that for the.
Yeah. So like I said, at, at that point, I think you'll, you'll be fine to, um, submit your eligibility form and then then you have the next, you know, even if it takes you until March to get us that full packet, but come touch base in February and then March, have the full information. It's a pretty involved project. It's not, I think it's something we typically see.
Thank you.
Now, I, I just want to review for the public, but also I am a little confused. The January meeting is January nineteenth?
Correct.
And at that meeting, eligibility forms be due, or is that a meeting where people go to get a general overview of what CPC does and what projects are at?
Both. So what we're gonna do is we start our meetings at five thirty. We're gonna leave ourselves the first half hour to conduct our normal business, because that's our normal meeting day. And then we're gonna hold our public, uh, annual public hearing at six PM. Uh, which will also, that will be, um, we're gonna, you know, u- utilize social media plus we have to, it's part of the requirements that we listed in the, um, town gazette two weeks prior to the meeting. And also we'll probably reach out and ask that the board of selectmen mention it at their upcoming meetings as well.
Now, if people don't have the eligibility form in January nineteenth, does that mean they can't submit a project or?
They certainly could submit up on, in the, in our February meeting. So which would be the third Thursday of February, but then we're getting, we're flirting with getting close to being able to execute unless it's a really kind of cut and dry, simple. I'll, actually I'll use the town clerks project, um, as an example, like that was a pretty cut and dry, smaller scale project. So to say that, you know, in February, yes, it's eligible. In March, yes, we can fund it. Um, and we, you know, we could even write a warrant article the night of if, you know, if, if it made sense to the committee.
Will you fund, do you do partial funding?
Absolutely. We can also make that. So if we felt, and I don't, again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee, but it is something that could happen. Um, and we'll use the libraries as examples. So if the library said, we need half a million dollars, but the committee felt that it was only reasonable to fund two hundred and fifty thousand, the, the committee could also make that recommendation that we could only, you know, do partial funding based on the financial standing of our, of our accounts at that time and other projects that come in the pipeline. That's kind of one of the important things about the annual public meeting too, is that the, all the committees and commissions involved is to have them, other members, we'll use, um, conservation to have other people that are involved with the conservation commission come if they know that, you know, there might be a piece of land available that's, you know, would be a really good acquisition for the town. We want them to be there at the same time as historical, so we can weigh out what's in the pipeline, because, you know, we certainly don't want to exhaust our funds on one project if we know something else of importance is coming up. The, the overall idea would try to, you know, make a fair balance between the four, you know, categories.
Do you have a cap on the amount of money you'll give out in a particular year?
That would, again, that would kind of.
You know, like a minimum cap, because obviously you don't want.
No, so we, we don't have anything as far as, you know, like a dead set, like this is our, our Mac, there is no maximum. Um, again, it's, you know, what the, the thoughts of the committee itself, um, based on what we have versus what the ask is. We're actually gonna, we have our regular meeting tomorrow night where we will, we also have the capability to bond. Um, just like, you know, we bond for the police station. Um, it's no different. We're just bonding for, for CPA projects. So we could take, you know, say if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years, whatever it may be, uh, myself, um, Administrator Mullin. Had, we had a meeting with Stuart Saginaw, um, from the Ma- Mass Community Preservation Coalition last week to discuss that. He gave us an overview and we'll actually be, um, watching a video and having a discussion about that. So if a project of that magnitude that we couldn't fund in a single year, we can always explore bonding and actually I, I meant to reach out to Treasurer Reynolds as well, because there is a worksheet that will show us um, what our bonding capacities are based on a percentage of our, you know, our income for the CPC. So.
It doesn't affect outrating as a town, correct?
No. Nope. And it's, and that, that's, that's a unique situation in itself. So if we bond something for CPC, um, you can only use that money for CPC, but say we had a situation where like this past year where we had that reimbursement from the schools, you can actually use non, non CPA money to pay that bond, but you can't do the reverse. You can't use the CPA bonded money to pay the police station, for instance. So say if we ever had that situation where we wanted to, you know, reduce our debt on a project to help, um, bolster the, the CPC back up, we could do that as well.
Thank you. Um, most, many residents understand that one percent of the tax money that comes in goes to CPC. What are your other funding sources? Do you currently have?
So we have matching funds from the state. It's largely driven by the amount of deeds recorded. So right now, the this year is unique where the amount of deeds being recorded is kind of, is, is slowing down. So we're not seeing as much, but there was also, an additional twenty million dollars signed into the legislator, um, legislature at the end of the year, to help increase the matching funds for this year.
That's all coming to date.
No, no. So it's based on, and your reimbursement is always based, so the percentage is based on your surcharge and, um, what the state's available funds are. So, so actually, so towns that have a higher surcharge, like towns that have a three percent surcharge, you'd get more funds. And obviously the size of the town is taken into account there, because they're collecting more money. But that's variable. So it's like, that's one thing when you're talking about bonding, that you can only bond off of your town surcharge. You can't bond off of the, the state's matching funds because it's not a dead, you know, it's, it's a variable amount every year.
Thank you very much. It was excellent. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
People, just remember the meeting will be January nineteenth, five thirty PM at prime time.
Yes. Yeah. So our regular meeting will be at five thirty and then the actual annual public hearing will start at six, but everyone is more than welcome to join us at five thirty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Uh, next on the agenda, Mr. Pacheco. Mike Pacheco, our town clerk. Going to be speaking about elected official term expiring and, uh, public hearing request for vote by mail.
All right. So the first is just, um, our annual letter that we provide for informational purposes, that we have ten elected officials expiring, uh, terms expiring for the twenty twenty-three annual town election. Uh, I'd like to read off the positions if that's okay.
Thank you.
We have a position for a board of assessors for a three-year term, a position on the board of selectmen for a three-year term, two positions on the DR school committee for a three-year term, one position on the housing authority for a five-year term, one position on parks and recreation for a three-year term, one position on the planning board for a five-year term, one position on the public library trustees for a three-year term, one position for sewer commissioner for a three-year term, and one position for town moderator for a one-year term. All those officials whose terms are expiring, uh, we just sent them a letter to let them know. And for anyone interested in running for office, we have nomination papers available starting January third at the town clerk's office.
When must nomination papers be returned?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, but it's, I believe it's February seventeenth. So they have about six weeks.
Uh, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Karen, any questions?
Mr. Priest, stand here.
I'm sorry?
Mrs. Priest, stand here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, next, a discussion in regards to public hearing request for vote by mail.
Um, yeah, so the Votes Act, which was signed into law in twenty twenty-two, uh, made vote by mail into law, no excuse voting by mail. And if we take no action, we will have vote by mail for the annual town election. I am just requesting, we, I know there's many opinions on vote by mail. I just want to hear what the public has to say. So I'm requesting that we have a public hearing to opt out of the vote by mail. I was hoping to do it in January, at your January twenty-fifth selectmen's meeting.
December twenty-eighth, we also have a meeting.
Okay. Whatever works for the, for the selectmen, if you're willing.
We're trying to keep that meeting lights between Christmas and New Year, so.
I'll be entertaining a motion on that shortly, but before we do take a, a, a vote on it, um, whether to have the meeting or not, if we were to opt out of vote by mail, how much of a savings would it be to the community?
I, I threw in a number around three thousand dollars, but there's really no data to go by. It'd be the first annual town election that we had, no excuse vote by mail. So just going off kind of what we had for the primary election and the general election, I know we won't have that kind of turnout for vote by mail, but there are some costs that I would have to incur either way. Uh, you'd have to order more ballots to anticipate. You know, the vote by mail and, and, but knowing the extra workload for the office and resources, I said, I, I would anticipate around three thousand dollars, but there's no data. It's never happened before. So that's my best educated guess.
Now, what is the process? You don't send out a mailing to a whole community, correct?
No, the state sent out a mailing. I think it was like forty-five days or so before the primary and the, the general, which is required by law for state elections, but there's no requirement for town elections to do that. So no, I wouldn't send out a mailing to the residents, unless if there was a request, I would entertain it. There's no funding for it. But if, if you guys, if that was something that the board of selectmen was in, interested in, I would work with, with you guys on that.
So if it did pass and we did have vote by mail, what process were you planning on using if someone wanted to vote by mail?
Um, so by law, the, the application has to be available on the website. We would use all our normal chains of communication that we do, um, message boards, I guess maybe, um, the town website, the town clerk's board, but nothing extraneous, nothing crazy that I, we have limited resources in Dayton, so I, I would use, uh, limited resources.
Have you budgeted this?
No. So the Votes Act was signed in, in June of twenty twenty-two and our town, annual town meeting is in June and I was at the meeting, uh, at the town clerk's conference when they signed this into law with, town council for the secretary of state's office, and she didn't even know what was, the law was gonna say. So there's no way to anticipate what, what was gonna be signed into law, what, what this would look like. We, we didn't know anything from when I came before you for police details or early voting, we, we just didn't know what was gonna happen. Uh, but absentee voting has always been, um, available and it would still be available. So no one would not be afforded the right to vote if you can't vote on election day for many, any number of reasons, you can still vote. And that absentee voting is available in person and, and also by mail.
Thank you.
That is available.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, you said that, uh, voting by mail, you have to print more ballots. Why is that?
There's no data behind it. I would, I, I know there would be more people voting. I, 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 just by looking at what happened at the state election, um, for voting by mail, you don't need an excuse for it. So, but not being able to anticipate what that number is and needing the ballots, I work with our machines, I would have to order more ballots just for that reason alone.
Well, I think if more people are voting, that's always a good thing.
Definitely. I agree with you. Yes.
In the past, uh, federal election that we had in, in November, thirty-seven percent of the residents, thirty-seven point four percent of the residents voted by mail, which I think is great. Uh, I would hate to, to lose that. And absentee ballots, there's certain requirements. You, you can't just go in and get one. There's certain things you gotta not be available that day. There's a bunch of different reasons, but I think a lot of people, apparently thirty-seven percent, um, prefer just to vote by mail, don't have to go through the gauntlet of people holding signs and everything else and they, they can just do it that way. So, uh, I'm not, I wouldn't support getting rid of the vote, uh, the vote by mail myself, so.
I appreciate the comments. That's a public hearing would be nice to hear what everyone else does say.
Would I would like to go over, so we have a, a timeline. Mr. Karen, did you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Regarding a timeline, you need, for the April election, you would need a decision by when?
Well, the law says forty-five days before, but.
What would that be? Give me a date.
So I think that's mid, um, it's April, so.
April eighth.
It's April eighth, so thirty days is, uh, March and, um, so like mid February, but that, that doesn't, I would request that you, the public hearing in January, just not to rush.
Mr. Mullin, um, can we vote following the public hearing, the same meeting?
Yeah, I don't, Alec, I don't see anything in the statutory language that the town clerk provided. As long as the hearing, as long as the hearing, Alec, in the public vote, uh, happens le- not less than forty-five days prior, uh, there's nothing preventing the hearing in the vote, uh, whatever the vote is from taking place in the same night.
Now, this public hearing, um, voters, the public would make comment and the board of selectmen would be the ones who would vote. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't read it that way. I don't read it that way. Clerk, can you want to comment on that?
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, the way I read it, and this is the first time I'm seeing it, I think it's the people vote.
No, the, the board of selectmen.
Board of selectmen, okay.
That's, that was my reading of it, I should say, yep.
That's, that was mine as well. Um, that's why.
So even if the people voted as, voiced their concerns and saying that they wanted to opt out, board of selectmen would still have the ability to
Yes.
wire voting?
Yes, we obviously answer to the, to the voters in the election. Thank you.
I have the sound then correct, but.
Uh, Mr. Pacheco, um, we will, I'll, um, like to know a couple of dates. Uh, yes, Mr. Karen.
What's, what's wrong with the way we do the election now?
Uh, there's nothing wrong with the way we do the election now. This is, this is, uh, personal preference and it's, uh, we talk about saving the town money. It would save the town some money. I, I'm sure the residents may have other opinions. Um, that's just from my small view and, um, I'm only one person.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So, um, possibility of a public hearing, couple of dates? The twenty-eighth?
So.
Of December. No, I'm just throwing dates out. I'm not saying we're gonna, you know.
Next upcoming three meetings are the twenty-eighth of December, January eleventh and January twenty-fifth.
Would January twenty-fifth be cutting it to, cutting it close for you?
I requested the twenty-fifth, but the eleventh would be nice, uh, either one. Either one is fine.
I'd vote for the eleventh.
I will entertain a motion with a date, please. We have three dates before us.
I'd make a motion that it be the eleventh of January.
Do I have a second on the motion? I will step down his chair and second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
No.
Chairman Hall? Chairman Hall is an aye. The, uh, public hearing on the vote by mail will be held on January eleventh here in Old Town Hall, at what time?
Uh, we could begin the hearing, Alec, at six P M., right at the beginning of the meeting, if the town clerk agrees.
I appreciate it, yes, that would be great.
Six P M., um, would that be okay for everyone, or would six-thirty be more?
Six P M. is fine with me.
Six P M. is fine?
It's, it's our regular meeting, so we're gonna be here at six.
Six P M. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is public input. And before we begin to take public input, I'd like to go over a few of the rules, as I often do. First, we will limit public input to five minutes. Usually at the three-minute mark, I will remind you that your time is limited. No criticism of public employees, people who are on the payroll. The law does not protect members of the board of selectmen, but it does by union, some of the people are, are union employees, and town rules prevent the criticism of public employees in public. Uh, no disruptive behavior or language that creates a sense of fear or risk of harm. No employee should bring department business to the body, meaning the board of selectmen, through public input. Please speak with the town administrator or the administrative assistant to be placed on the, the agenda. And then the last point. The board of selectmen is an elected body. We are not the only elected body in Dayton. As a result, certain elected bodies have specific duties, responsibilities, and policies and procedures, and they are governed by bylaws. So there may run a time where the chairman will say that that business uh, belongs with a specific elected board. We really don't want to blindside an elected board. They should have the opportunity to comment, or at least hear about it first, not at a board of selectmen. With that being said, anyone who has, yes, Laura, could you? I don't know if you can, can you come up, or if not, I understand, just your name and address for record.
Laura Madera, sixteen forty-five Maple Street. Um, I just wanted to apologize, um, for the kind of technical difficulties, and I'm hoping, um, if the recording does survive, that the format or screening is okay, because I can see my cameras, but when it records, it zooms in. So if somebody's cut off in the video, I was having some difficulty, and that was obviously a very important meeting earlier today with the, retiring of one of our fire department members, so I just hope that I was able to capture it all well, and I'm sorry if I did not. So I just wanted to come up and apologize.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it. We also appreciate the work that you and David and your group do, and I do have a request. We have budget deliberations coming up. Please take a look at your technology and what you need for upgrades.
Right, and the works.
You know, I recognize the fact that you're also working with antiquated equipment, so if we can help improve that, we will, we're in this together, and I appreciate what you do, thank you. Uh, is there any other comment, public input? No, thank you. Next on your gender announcements.
Mr. Chairman, please note that the townwide parking ban is in effect from November first, two thousand and twenty-two, through April first, two thousand and twenty-three. No vehicles shall be allowed to remain on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. Dayton Police Department will take notice, and I understand they will begin, uh, ticking the people, even though it's not snowing, you shouldn't be parking on, uh, the street. The town of Dayton's Food Bank Distribution will be held next on December seventeenth, this coming Saturday, two thousand and twenty-two, located at the town hall, lower level at nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue. And we have some vacancies in our committees. Let me, uh, give you the numbers. The cable, uh, cable television committee needs one member, commission on disability needs three members, conservation commission needs one member, cultural council needs one member, fire station building committee needs one member, open space committee needs three members, soil conservation commission needs one member, salary waste committee needs one member, and the historic commission needs one member. That's all the announcements.
Thank you very much. Uh, town administrators report, community compact cabinet efficiency regionalization grant.
Uh, yes, I'm taking, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Um, I just wanted to share, um, and I've won, and we had a great day, um, at, um, at the State House last week, uh, with Chairman Hall, Salkman, Pacheco. Uh, you may remember, the public may remember, um, in late October, we had a discussion, uh, about, um, applying for a community compact cabinet efficiency and regionalization grant, uh, where we had the opportunity to apply for a grant, uh, to, uh, that would really help us hire a consultant, um, to work with the Dayton Water District and to, uh, begin, uh, trying to identify, uh, any potential efficiencies or, um, or consolidation opportunities, uh, that actually may exist between the town and the water district. Um, as we know and the residents know, uh, we've been focused a lot in the last few years on infrastructure and capital planning, uh, you know, like really ensuring that we, uh, that we have fiscal planning, tax equity, um, oh, you know, like in a whole, oh, like in a whole another, in a whole number of, uh, um, financial planning attributes uh, that, uh, that, that are really essential, um, in the here and now in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, so, uh, so we applied for the grant with support, uh, from the Dayton Water District, and I'm very pleased to report uh, that we were awarded the grant in the amount of, uh, ninety thousand dollars. Um, and I've already reached out to the water district, like, asked them, um, for their input, uh, concerning up a meeting so we can kick off the project, and, um, uh, this is a very, um, exciting, timely opportunity, and, um, so you do have for your consideration and approval, like, I would ask that, uh, you authorize me, like, as town administrator, to, uh, to en, uh, to enter into the contract on behalf of the town, uh, with the Commonwealth regarding the proposed, uh, uh, regarding the proposed grant contract, uh, so we can, uh, kick off this, uh, this ninety thousand dollar project and get things, and get things begun with the water district.
Are there any questions, Mr. Pacheco?
I, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Karen? I, I, I do want the public to be aware, you know, we have a pretty successful program in North Dayton, working with the city of Taunton. In the south, we have wells, some people have water from the town of Somerset. We know that in the south, uh, there are upgrades that are currently taking place, the Main Street project and the Cedar One well. So people may wonder why we need this money, and why do we need to reach out? There are three reasons. One, the governor's office is pushing regionalization agreements. There are some small communities out there that are hoping to join with some larger communities because they have needs, and it's difficult for them to meet all of their needs without some help. And based on the fact that the state and the federal government is encouraging these regional agreements, people who partner, that's somewhat of an incentive, and that is looked favorably when it becomes time to award money, such as the ninety thousand dollars the Dayton got. In addition, and it's no secret, that both the city of Taunton is only at sixty-seven percent at capacity with water, and would love the opportunity to partner with all of Dayton. And currently, the town of Somerset is working with the water district in regards to a, a major well purchase. Currently, the Dayton Water District has been meeting on a regular basis with the Somerset Water District and the Somerset Board of Selectmen to finalize that six million dollar deal. So it's not just the state and the feds who are pushing partnerships. Many of the communities around us, for various reasons, are looking to partner, so. With that being said, Mr. Mullin, I'll entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Mullin to wo, work with the partners of this grant to initiate the application of it, is that correct?
Um, to enter into the grant contract agreement between the town and the state.
Thank you, I thought we'd already done that.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion made second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
An aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye, but I do have a second motion that I would entertain, that, um, Mr. Mullin act as our representative in coordinating, um, work with this grant. My understanding is, who are the partners? You're working mostly with Dayton Water District, is that correct?
Yeah, it's really focused on the, it's between the town and the water district.
And with that being said, I, I, I can't speak for Mr. Pacheco or Mr. Karen, but for the sake of getting things done in a timely fashion, calling meetings, trying to figure out when the board of selectmen is, um, available to have a meeting, would it be more efficient to authorize Mr. Mullin to act on our behalf? And then report back to us for final votes, if ne, necessary.
I'm in favor of that, yeah.
Sure.
I'll entertain that formal motion to authorize Mr. Mullin to represent the board of selectmen in discussions or work on this, um, grant with the Dayton Water District.
I'll make that motion, the second.
Motion made second, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
An aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you, um, any other, if, Mr., any other business, Mr. Mullin, regarding, uh, town administrator?
Um, I don't have any, I just wanna wish you, um, and our residents a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, old business, is there any old business? No? Okay, uh, Dayton Water District. Um, three things. One, the Dayton Water District has been going, the weather has been relatively cooperative. Full blazes on Main Street. And if the weather keeps holding the way it is going, they will work well into December. And they have said, they are not promising, that they will, well, unless we don't get a big blizzard, put a skim coat down on the side, uh, on the southern side of Main Street, 'cause right now it is moon turf, and there have been some problems, and the water district has asked, please go slow, please do not drive in the other lane, there have been a couple of close calls. Uh, one side is moon turf, the other side is smooth, so people heading east have been tempted to go into the other lane, and they don't see cars coming out of Banamet or, or Milk, so. It's created a dangerous situation. Secondly, the water district has hired an engineer and has begun serious work on the Cedar One well. And as I mentioned earlier, um, the water district is trying to work closely with the Somerset Board of Selectmen and the water district to come to a final agreement. The members of the water district at a public meeting voted to spend six million dollars to purchase the well off of Brook Street from the town of Somerset. However, Somerset Board of Selectmen and the Somerset Water District need to work through some things before they will put it on the warrant for their s, spring meeting. It didn't make the fall meeting because they had some conflict on some financial arrangements. So we look, we're hoping that goes well, and.
Financial arrangements for the six million, or?
Yes.
Town financial arrangements.
Well, how the six million is gonna be dispersed in the town of Somerset?
Oh, okay.
Is it gonna go to the water district, is it gonna go the board of selectmen, and they'll, you know, allocate it accordingly? So they're working that up. It obviously will be tremendous financial benefit to the town of Somerset, and the water district is, is concerned, especially with the current, or I should say, current with the impending growth coming our way of having enough water. Those people who don't know what I'm talking about, there is a housing development off of Council Oak Way that has a potential of having twenty-six new houses that will be shortly going, in January, going before the planning board. And that will obviously be the Dayton Water District's, um, area. I do have a, a, a brief notice from Bill Rooney, all kinds of good things going on over there. And very shortly, we are going to be appointing two Dayton residents, uh, two community representatives to the D R Regional Academic Advisory Committee. But on January nineteenth, Dayton Millworth Regional High School is going to be having an open house. I believe it begins at six P M. That open house is open to the public, but especially eighth graders who are trying to decide whether they're going to go to B P, Bristol Aggie, or D R. We did them for a number of years in Taunton, and they were well received. And that's usually the place where schools showcase what they have to offer. And knowing Mr. Rooney, that's what D R. will be doing on January nineteenth, showcasing what D R. has to offer incoming students and the taxpayers of the town of Dayton. Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, library committee?
Yes, the Building Library Committee and the Dayton Public Library Trustees met at our new library, uh, two oh seven Main Street on December sixth. Uh, we discussed, uh, Plan B construction, when they're gonna begin, uh, the work. As you know, we voted, uh, to hire them at our November thirtieth meeting, and they should be starting their, uh, work, uh, pretty soon, we hope, hopefully before Christmas, but they may just be dropping materials off and equipment off, and then start, uh, in January. And we also discussed our C B C, uh, application, and as I mentioned earlier, we'll be going before C B C on January nineteenth, same night as that open house that, uh, you just mentioned. The, uh, Dayton Historical Commission met last night, uh, we discussed several things. We're in the process of ordering a, uh, sign for the James Briggs Garden. We did, we discussed the design and gonna get some cost figures on that. Uh, we discussed the survey and planning grant that was already approved, and what stage we're at, uh, with that. As the public may know, we're gonna be looking at some historic houses in North Dayton under this new. under this new grant. We also talked about, I talked to the membership about the, of the committee, about the CBC application that the Library Committee will be applying for. And we talked also about the rail trail, D.C.R. We were given some information from D.C.R., rail trail from the, from the state, as to what some of the historic areas along the rail, along the trail, and we have some important in that, but they actually gave us more information than what we actually had ourselves, so we were happy to get that information. And that's basically it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
Regarding the Historical Commission, where were they at in their process of the historical, or applying for historical district in the village?
They've already got the grant. They already got the funds from CBC last year, and they're just beginning that process. Stacy, I believe Stacy Spies will be meeting with us in our January tenth meeting to, I think she'll do it by Zoom, but she'll be sitting down with us and explaining what the process is, and when she'll begin the project, so.
That's exciting.
It needs to be done by June, hopefully, so.
Oh, okay.
She's, we've worked with her before, so we're confident that she'll get it done.
Will the Board of Selectment be a part of the decision-making process, or is that strictly to that? No, thank you.
Yeah, no. It's, it's a grant that, it's money that we got that we were given permission by the residents to spend for the survey. We're in the, we first surveyed ninety-four houses that we had done initially. We're in the process of printing that up, so that the, I believe the assessors office will have a copy of it, the Historic Commission will have a copy of it, and there'll be a copy at Town Hall if the public wishes to take a look at it. And there'll be some zip drives made available to other people, so that they can print the material up themselves.
Thank you very much. New business, review, discuss, and act, Board of Health Member Resignation. On December eighth, twenty twenty-two, we received a letter of resignation from Barbara Katavia, in which she has said that she is no longer able to continue her duties. We want to thank her for her time on the Board of Health and her love of the town of Dayton. It came clear in her passion for advocating for the Board of Health and for the citizens of Dayton. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Barbara Katavia from the Board of Health, which will include all positions Mrs. Katavia held related to the Board of Health, including solid waste and stormwater committees.
I'll make that motion with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, an appointment to the Board of Health of, with the resignation of Barbara Katavia, it is now necessary to appoint someone from the community to serve as the third member of the Board of Health. About a month ago, a selection committee met, and they interviewed four candidates that were referred to the Board of Selectment, and there were two finalists in that group. One was the member who was appointed, Paul Pacheco. The other finalist candidate was Patrick McGovern. Based on that, it is the recommendation of that selection committee, the two members that still remain, Mr. Karen and Mr. Mullen, that Patrick McGovern be appointed to the Board of Health. I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Patrick McGovern to the Board of Health.
I'll make that motion.
Just before we do that, does the position have to be posted again?
No, it does not.
No.
Okay.
We went through, we went through the appointment policy, Selectman Karen, and there was, and the policy does not speak to the timing, or like the gap in, oh, you know, I can developing a pool of, okay, like applicants, like because we went through this process, like the last process that was finished just merely over a month ago, oh, you know, like we have, and one of the things, so we have a very recent process with a pool, often which a finalist we can consider, and the last three processes really, oh, you know, by and large, generated the same applicants as well.
Right.
So, that's why we've, that's why we feel really comfortable with the recommendation being made tonight.
Then I second that.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda is the job description of the Board of Health Office Manager, Administrative Support Staff.
I recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we table this at this time. We don't have anything for it anyways, at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just want to remind people that this is a union position, and I don't think the union wishes for it to come out of the collective bargaining agreement. So, I would like to entertain a motion to table this item.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. We have already completed item D, D on the new business agenda. Item E, to appoint community representatives to the Dayton Rehoboth Regional Academic Advisory Superintendent Rooney has worked closely with Mr. Mullen in reaching out to the community to involve citizens and parents in assisting both in Rehoboth and Dayton. These two members that we're going to appoint this evening will be members at large. The committees have both parents, as well as one member from, at the elementary, one at the middle, who do not have children currently in the school. They want individuals who are looking at things from the taxpayer point of view. Parents have a tendency of looking at it from the child's point of view more often than not. So, with that being said, we mentioned this a month ago, and at meetings, that we were accepting applications, and it was mentioned through the PTO and through the school department. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to appoint Donna Burdows to the Dayton Elementary Academic Advisory Committee.
I'll make that motion.
The second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. At the middle school level, I want to entertain a motion to appoint Charles Hart of nine seventy-three Dayton Woods Circle to represent us as the at-large member at Dayton Middle School Advisory Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda, community representative appointments to the Dayton Rehoboth Regional Advisory Finance Committee. Susan Lorenz and Rachel Dingus are members of FinCon. They have also served and have experience serving as members of the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School Committee. So, I want to entertain a motion to appoint Susan Lorenz and Rachel Dingus as community representatives to the Dayton Rehoboth Regional Advisory Finance Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, Recommendation to appoint Matt Tanis as a part-time communications Mr. Mullen, regarding this position?
Yes.
You know, unfortunately, Mr. Cronin, I'm sorry, Chief Cronin has suffered a family loss, and I would like to read this letter, that his recommendation, since he cannot be here this evening.
Yes, sir.
Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, in a continuous effort to bolster our part-time ranks in our communications center, we had started a hiring campaign. An announcement was made in October indicating that we are actively seeking candidates. One applicant who has worked for Dayton Police Department and Communications in his capacity in the past has contacted us with an interest to be reappointed, Matthew Tanis. Immediately upon appointment, Mr. Tanis would begin in-house refresher training and certification updates with dispatch liaison Teresa Costa. Once completed, Mr. Tanis, who over the years has served in multiple roles as a public servant for the town of Dayton, will once again serve the men and women of the Dayton Police Department, Communications, as well as our community. I expect his onboarding to progress quickly, and I'm confident they will be cleared for desk duty within a short timeframe, given his experience and familiarity with our operations. Respectfully, Sean P. Cronin, Chief of the Dayton Police Department. I will entertain a motion to appoint Matt Tanis as a part-time communications dispatcher.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, Facilities Request for Father's House Family Church. We have a facility reservation request that the church and its pastor, Maria Murphy, are requesting weekly services with an attendance of between fifty-five and sixty people. We would like to use the old Town Hall for our weekly Sunday services from January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, to March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, while we look to secure land to build in Dayton. During the winter months, we can cover any cars to remove and clean up snow on the premises. It will be open to the general public. They're saying here that there will be no food sold, so it won't be necessary for the Health Department to issue a permit, and they say there will be no admission fee. It is a nonprofit, and they would also like to request that the fee, which I believe is twenty-five dollars?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five dollars a week?
Yeah.
Yes.
That we waive that fee. So, I'm not sure if we want to do this as two separate motions, or...
Could I just discuss it briefly beforehand? Yesterday, we met with Pastor Murphy, Mr. Commissioner, Bill and Commissioner Jim Agia, Mike Mullen, Tom Ferry, to discuss if this is accepted, what the requirements would be. So, this is a, so the public knows, this is a unique situation. This is a church that we bought the building for our libraries. So, it's, I, and I'm going to quote somebody else, but I treat this as if a church burnt down in Dayton, we would do what we could to assist them in, for the congregation to use the hall, but this isn't like we're going to become a church or anything like that, so. They've willing to pay for snow removal if it's necessary, what's not here, they're also willing to pay, if there's any extra cleaning, if it's muddy outside, snowy, whatever come in, they're willing to pay the extra money for that. Regarding the fee, I think we ought to charge a fee, and I express this to them, because it's a week, it's not like somebody using this for bridal shower or whatever, it's a, it's a weekly event. We'll have to have heat and electricity and that kind of stuff, and I suggested to them, and they had no problem with it, charging them twenty-five dollars a week versus the seventy-five dollars a week. And I explained to them my thinking behind that, so it's up to the board, obviously, whether or not we want to do that. I think they were, they gave the town of Dayton a great opportunity by letting us purchase the building and use it for our library, which I've mentioned numerous times, the amount of money that the town is saving by doing that. But this is an unusual situation. They plan on finding someplace in Dayton to keep the church going, so it's not like they're going out of town or whatever, and it's most likely going to be longer than the period of time that they're asking for. So, I initially asked them to give us, to apply for it for a couple of months, we'll see if there's any problems, if there's no problems, then we'll obviously extend that for a longer period of time. I have no problem with them using, even though it's a religious group, using town facilities for their services, they've been good to the residents of Dayton, they've had numerous different events to help the kids in Dayton, so I would support this happening.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
No, that's wrong with me.
One, the, this, the use of a public facility for a church is quite common, it was, it is and was done in the city of Taunton, using one of the schools for a church on Sundays. Mr. Pacheco, I want to thank you, the efforts that you put in developing an incredible relationship with this church and negotiating this fee, that I will support. We have a very special relationship with Father's House Family Church. As someone who, over twenty-five years ago, was on a building committee, a library that I believed after many years of frustration would never happen, this church could have reached out to some private developer, taken in a hell of a lot more money, and they chose to give this community the opportunity to have a library. With the economic times we face, I really doubt, if we hadn't been able to work this deal, that we would have seen a lot, new library in my lifetime. I really don't. I really thank and appreciate what they have done for us, and I think it's time we return the favor. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the request with a fee of twenty-five dollars.
Second.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Karen?
It's been a long night already.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
Thank you, Jim, for all what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, contract, contract with Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a sealer of weight and measures inspector. Mr. Agia?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Board, good evening, Dayton. I'll, I'll make this as pithy as I can, because it's coming up on eight o'clock. As you know, from past discussions, I have assumed oversight of weights and measures in the town of Dayton. In doing so, we have appointed a sealer of weights and measures. However, the town of Dayton has no equipment for sealers of weights and measures. So, executive assistant and I vetted the cost for outfitting Dayton with the appropriate equipment, which needs to be recertified on an annual basis, and those costs were in excess of six thousand dollars. So, I felt that there had to be an option available to smaller communities like this. The current setup that we had of using someone from another town meant that the other town had to loan the equipment to us. I didn't think that was appropriate, so I said, there must be another way. So, I reached out to the Commonwealth and found out that for communities under a population of ten thousand persons, that they have a program where a state inspector will come into town, inspect our establishments. For that, they get... Um, for that, they get paid a fee, but we are able to pass that cost through to the business. So this comes at a net cost to the taxpayer of zero. The businesses will be responsible for paying for the service as contracted with the state. Um, so right now, and I'll, I'll leave the details to Administrator Mullin, but right now, it looks like we have enough funding in the budget to cover the costs for the first year. And then I will be coming back to you with a fee structure that I will then implement and charge these businesses accordingly, so that all of our fees, including soft costs, are covered, uh, for, uh, sealer and weights and measures, um, requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Uh, yeah, Alec, I just wanna, I just wanna stop by thanking Jim, um, Commissioner Agia for, uh, for his work on this. Um, this, uh, uh, you know, we've worked and we've, uh, you know, and we've had, uh, you know, and we've had some challenges with our weights and measures process over the last year. Um, uh, this is an incredible solution, uh, like it's a very, it's a very cost-neutral solution. Uh, one, um, on page, on page two of the contract, uh, you can, uh, you can see, uh, the, uh, the cost on an annual basis is fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, that is well before we look at any fees, oh, you know, like in a fee structure like Jim mentioned. Uh, uh, but one of the things we have, uh, funded virtually to the dollar, uh, uh, fourteen hundred dollars in this rates, in this year's weights and measures budget. And, uh, so there's a potential that at the end of the year, uh, we will, uh, we, we may need a transfer, because twelve hundred of the fourteen hundred dollars exists in the salary line rather than the expense line. Uh, so at the end of the year to close out, we may need, uh, based on the timing of the inspections that will happen, uh, we may need a transfer, oh, yeah, to move that twelve hundred, uh, down, uh, with an additional two hundred in, uh, the expense line that already exists, but this is an incredible program. I mean, it's something, uh, that just, uh, with the economies of scale, uh, like it works. I mean, this is a model where, uh, like it will work best, and I really, again, I thank, uh, Commissioner Agia for his work on this.
Plus, it helps us keep the population under ten thousand, because now we can't go over.
Yeah, no, I was thinking the same thing.
Um, Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for looking into this and it's great doing this for the town.
Yeah, good job. I never would have thought of it.
No, 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 I, I figured there had to be a way. How can a community outside be taxed with that type of, uh, of a capital investment? And, and then the ongoing upkeep, so, yeah. Thank you for recognizing that.
You do an outstanding job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We have some really good department heads, and you're one of the top.
Thank you.
Uh, I do have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Who will enter into this contract, Mr. Agia or Mr. Mullin?
That's a good que, that's a great question.
Very good question.
Yeah.
You're both?
Right, the, the department falls under my.
Yeah, I would recommend that the board authorize the building commissioner, uh, like as the, like as a contracting authority on behalf, on behalf in, on behalf unauthorized by the Board of Selectmen in this case.
I will entertain a motion to approve this contract and authorize Building Commissioner James Agia to enter into this contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Standards.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Uh, next on the agenda, annual liquor license renewals. Now, do we have to take these individually?
Um, Kim?
You don't have to, you can do it as listed.
We can do it as read?
Yep.
Um, I do have a question. I'm assuming that all of these that are listed here have no debts to the town of Dyton, whether they be taxes or fees to the clerk's office or the Board of Assessors?
Well, correct, they've all been signed off by the treasurer's office.
Are there any questions, concerns about any of these applicants?
Nobody had a violation this year, right?
No.
No.
Uh-uh.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to renew the liquor licenses of the following businesses. Forty-four Liquors Corporation, Seventeen Twelve Corporation, Alice's Last Stop, Abi Shalata's Corporation, doing business as Mendoza's Liquors, Rochelle's, Taunton Yacht Club, Vinnyac Incorporated, doing business as Mount Hope Liquors, and Winthrop Street Gas.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, annual dealers license renewals. Um, are there any questions? Um, Mr. Mullin?
Yes, sir.
Do any of the following businesses have any outstanding debts with the town of Dyton, whether it be taxes or fees?
They do not, they've all been signed off by the treasurer's office.
Is what? Uh, and there have been no, uh, there are no pending citations?
Yeah.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the annual dealer license renewals of Reese's Town Line, Town Line Auto, Town Line Auto of Williams Street. I say that, because there's two different ones that have Town Line Auto. Uh, Lynn's Propane, Truck and Iron Traders, Five-O-eight Customs and Collisions, Costis Truck and Auto, L-L and, I'm sorry, L-N-L Used Car Parts.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Public input. I do not see any request for public input. Um, it, knowledgements. Uh, we received a letter from Annabelle Powell, Powell, sorry, Director of Council on Aging, requesting the appointment of new part-time employee to the primetime program from the S-C-S-A-P program. Uh, request is for the appointment of Barbara Prairie. Are there any questions in regards to Ms. Prairie? She's been in training at the Primetime Supportive Day Program for three years. Her date of hire would be, if approved, would go back to December fifth. She is replacing a regular part-time employee who has left employment with our department. Um, will we accept and appoint Barbara Prairie to this position? It's nineteen and a half hours a week.
I'll support it.
Absolutely.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Correspondence, a letter from Annabelle Powell, Executive Director for the Council on Aging, regarding a one thousand dollar donation to the Primetime Supportive Day Program from Terry Ruby, uh, licensed, uh, LMHC PhD Clinical Supervisor of the Elder Mobile Outreach Team. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant in deposit in the primetime gift account. Um, we don't have to vote on this, correct? Do we have to vote to accept the donation?
Yes, you should vote to accept the donation, yes.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to, to accept the donation from Terry, Dr. Terry E. Ruby, for the sum of one thousand dollars to the Primetime Supportive Day Program.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Letter from Annabelle Powell, Executive Director for the Council on Aging, regarding seventy dollars from an anonymous donor. As usual, all donations will be turned over to the town accountant in deposit of the Council on Aging Gift Account. I'll entertain a motion to accept this seventy-dollar donation to the Council on Aging, uh, from an anonymous donor.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Um.
Uh, we do have one more piece of, um, correspondence, uh, in your packet, Mr. Chairman, did you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
I just wanted to.
Um, from Robert Woods, dated Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, to Karen Brady, Mike Mullin, Police Range and Hunting Season. Honorable Selectmen and Police Chief and Department, on behalf of the local hunting community, we would like to thank the town of Dyton and the Police Department for working with us this year during the two-week shotgun season. It was greatly appreciated, and shows when we are working together, anything is possible. Sincerely, the Hunters of Dyton. And I know, in addition to Mr. Woods, there are several town employees who are part of the Hunters of Dyton. Um, you know, Dyton is many things, and it is definitely a hunting community. And I want to thank Mr. Woods, who was on Zoom this evening, for submitting this letter. We're very, very lucky with the Police Department and how well they work with the citizens of Dyton. Thank you. Uh, next, the approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, warrants for December seventh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three A dash twenty-three, a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-one cents, and twenty-three B dash twenty-three, a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and thirteen cents. I ask the Board of Selectmen to approve these warrants.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Warrants for December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, I ask the Board of Selectmen to approve these warrants, twenty-four A dash twenty-three, a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents, and twenty-four B dash twenty-three, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents, fifty-seven cents, excuse me.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Um, next on the agenda is to enter into executive session. Under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A, Subsection Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares, he declares. Dyton Town Clerical Union. Also under executive session, uh, Mass. General Laws, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one A, Subsection Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements. We will also, uh, be approving Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes of November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. We will not be returning to regular session. Um, I will.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye, and before we close, I want to wish everyone in the Dyton community a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season.
Happy Festivus.
Thank you.
Yeah.